Colin, January twenty-third, committee ought to hold meeting to order. And call on Brittany to call the roll.
Councilmember Smith.
Present.
Councilmember Stallins.
Present.
Councilmember Marsh.
Here.
Councilmember Crabtree.
Here.
Councilmember Craig.
Here.
Councilmember Martin.
Here.
Councilmember Sumner.
Here.
Councilmember Meek.
Here.
Councilmember Bogard.
Here.
Councilmember Velez.
Here.
Councilmember Bell.
Here.
Councilmember Drouin.
Here.
And we have a quorum.
Ask everyone to stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item is approval of minutes from the November twenty-first.
Second.
There's Chuck with the motion, Amy, second. All in favor?
Aye.
So move on to administrative matters.
This is kind of an annual review of Public Works in two thousand and twenty-four. And just kind of go over highlights and some things that we do. Any questions on the reports in the pack?
Okay, all right, we'll move forward then. Hoppin' Hill Public Works, we actually in two thousand and twenty-four did sixty-six drainage projects, which is a really good year for us. Previous year we did thirty-two, of course, you see the numbers there, I'm gonna go over one of them. But of course, that pertains to anything from cleaning out ditches to storm drains, putting rip raft in ditches, whatever it may be, but anything within the right of way. Anything outside of the right of way is actually under stormwater utility. Next slide. Property abatement, of course, we did six hundred and seventeen properties that we abated, and that's mostly grass trash and weeds and also junk. Pretty much, what was that in two thousand and twenty-three, so it's kind of staying steady right there. But that's pretty much a typical year for us, about six hundred to six hundred and twenty-five. All right, next slide. Street signage replacement, we did three hundred and five in two thousand and twenty-four. Of course, in two thousand and twenty-three, you said we did six oh, six oh four. But we replaced a lot of signs out in the neighborhoods and streets that used their reflectivity, which is basically at nighttime when your light shine on it, it basically where you can actually see the sign better. So we got to change them out when they start losing that retro reflectivity. Say that five times. Streets resurfacing, three and a half miles, which is about our standard for our budget. For new council members in two thousand and twenty-two, though, we did twenty-one point six, and that's because we got ARPA money, two million dollars in ARPA money to help do that. Right now, we do about three and a half miles a year, which about, which about six hundred thousand, which we need more funding to do streets resurfacing, though. We have a hundred and eighty-four miles in the city of Hopkinsville, and three, three and a half miles a year is not going, don't cut it. All right, next slide. Street sweeping, twenty-five hundred and three miles of street sweeping in two thousand and twenty-four. And of course, that's primary, most of that's downtown areas on a weekly basis. Then we do hit most streets that got curb and gutters. And we will do other streets and neighborhoods if, if they call and request it. If it's open ditch roads, if somebody calls and needs a street swept, we will do that by request. All right, next slide. Road salt applied, of course, last year was a very mild winter. We don't actually spread more salt this winter than we did last winter, but we spread a hundred and forty-five tons of salt. We're averaging around probably a hundred and seventy-five over the last four years, something around there. But that's, that's pretty typical. All right, next slide. Replacement sidewalks, we have replaced almost a half a mile sidewalks this year. This, this, that's actually in this budget over this year, but most of that we had, didn't have the funds the, the last part of the fiscal year, of last fiscal year. And the year before that, we did almost one mile. We still have about seventy-five thousand in the budget for sidewalk replacement, and what's the weather gets where we can get back to it, hopefully in March, maybe sooner than that. But we should have all of that money spent, and we'll be done roughly about another half mile of sidewalks before the end of this fiscal year. New sidewalks, of course, there is no new sidewalk budget money. We haven't, we got a few requests for new sidewalks. I will probably bring in back a request from the city council on some new sidewalks being requested, where we see a lot of foot traffic. But right now, we really want to focus on the sidewalks that we have now. We need to take care of what we have now before we start putting any new ones in. Fort Campbell striping, of course, some of you might know, some of the new council might not, but we have contracts with Fort Campbell, exit contracts. And, but we do the, the striping on, on base there for the roads and parking lots. And we did a hundred and fifty-eight miles of striping there for Fort Campbell. Last year, we had to do a little bit of catch-up, but we had some equipment failure the year before. So that's why you see that number two twenty-four a little bit higher. But we did, we did pretty much do everything on our contract this year. Fort Campbell signage replacements, two hundred and forty-two for two thousand and twenty-four. And that's pretty much what this, what's in our contract. So they had a bigger number at the very beginning, of course, twenty-two and twenty-three, you see that number higher, but that was part of that contract. But the numbers do go down a little bit, you know, it depends on the demand. Trash for cash program, two thousand and twenty-four, we did thirty-three thousand and forty ton, or forty pounds of litter pickup. So if you're not familiar with the trash for cash programs for nonprofit groups, we get a grant through the state that pays for this. And so we actually, Heather Braun is our but cash coordinator, but she hits us up. And we actually, I know Brittany and some others that, you know, participated in it, but it's a really good program, it helps clean our streets up. And most time, this program run April through October. City grounds, property maintenance, of course, this is just the ground maintenance side is only count parts and wreck, what they mow, but this is Blaine E. Sell's side. They did ten thousand two hundred and thirty-two acres mow, which when you take how many acres of property they mow, times about how many times they mow it, that's what you come up with. So that's basically all, it's a lot, it's a lot of acres they mow per year, which that's all your city, city properties, city parks, and cemeteries. Cemeteries, this is kind of a snapshot of how many graves are sold and barrels that was, was in between Riverside and K Springs Cemetery. Hundred and thirty-two graves were sold, and we had a hundred and forty-six barrels in, in both cemeteries, which is pretty, pretty much average. Cemetery revenue, we did two hundred and fifteen thousand seven hundred and eighty-five dollars in revenue for two thousand and twenty-four, which we, we actually, I think we sold a few more graves than we did the year before that, but that's why that number's a little bit higher. Fleet services, we did a thousand services for the fleet, which is police, fire, city admin, public works vehicles, CDS, all of them vehicles. And a lot of that is, we're, we're actually tracking a little bit better than what we used to. We used to track all the major services, but I got them tracking where we actually replaced windshield wipers and things like that, small stuff, we're, we're tracking that now, what we didn't before. So that's why that number's a little bit higher. Parks and recreation events through Toby's department. They did fifty-one events last year, and they had ten support roads and some other events that wasn't actually a, actually it's part of a city co-sponsored event. So they're very busy. Sportsplex events, tournaments, seventeen, they did fourteen on camps events. They had seven leagues. They did forty-five annual passes, which is down a little bit from previous year, but our, our day passes is, is gone way, way up this year, or last year, I'll say, two thousand and twenty-four. We was low with two thousand, low over two thousand day passes last year. Then the, the birthday parties, forty-five birthday parties, which is up from the previous year by fifteen. Then we did five hundred and twenty-three rentals, and it's pretty much the same as it was in two thousand and twenty-three. Bluegrass Splash Aquatic Center, of course, we had forty-two thousand five hundred and seventy-nine in attendance last year, which is, is a pretty good number, more than what we had in the last four. Of course, you see on two thousand and twenty-two zero, that year, we actually had the major water leak, so we did not open that year. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Have one real quick. Mike, you were talking about on the road paving, the three point five miles, six hundred thousand, and kind of chasing your tail all the time with that. If you had to put a number of miles that the city needed to fit, to, to implement yearly in order to make a real impact on our roads throughout the city, what would that be? What is that goal?
Well, you got a hundred and eighty-four miles of streets, typically a, a, a street, and it depends on, if it's low traffic, you'll get about twenty years out of it. Yeah, but if you have a high traffic area, you're gonna be likely to get twelve to fifteen years out of a street. And it all depends too on what kind of heavy equipment you have on that road. We, one thing, and I'm not picking on solid waste and anything, but they gone through the larger trucks. These larger trucks now are a problem for some of our older streets. They're not to DOT spec, where everything we have now, though, that's built within two thousand and twelve or fourteen, everything's got to be to Kentucky DOT spec now. But before then, there was no, no DOT spec. So a lot of your streets were built now, they don't have enough subbase under them, which is stone, underneath the actual asphalt. So you have issues with soft spots under the road and so forth. You don't have enough there to support the weight of these heavier vehicles. But I would say, if, get back to your question, I will say we probably need, we need to be paving roughly about eight, eight miles a year.
I just think it'd be good to have something like that mayor in place that we can see, because I know this is a continued thing for as many years as I've been around. People always claim about roads, and at least I like to have an overall goal of what, what it would be. Now, obviously, funding and everything's an issue all the time, but at least it gives us an idea of what we're working towards and how we can, if there is a way for us to start getting control of something like that, I'd like to know what that would be.
Well, and I've requested a half a million more dollars last budget, or actually, this, I guess it'd be this fiscal year's budget we're in now, but, you know, for road paving, just try to get ahead of it. Of course, you know, it's all about funding and where your, where your funds are, and how much money you have, and, and other, other demands of other departments and so forth, to take, you know how that works, so. But, you know, I talked to Troy a lot about this, that we need to start looking at more money in infrastructure, and just not roads, but sidewalks and so forth. We, we gotta start putting our money back in our city. You know, it's been, it's been like this for years, and, and it's catching up to us pretty quick.
Thank you.
All right, no, you have more questions?
No, thank you.
Oh, Troy didn't want me to relay, of course, y'all, y'all probably seen the hole over here. We've had a roof leak for a while. We've had three different contractors come out, try to find the leak, nobody can find it. It, it's one of, but when you have, you have three different levels of roof on this building. So we got perfect walls. And so it could be leaking in the wall, it could be leaking on roof. We did fix a few roof leaks patches that they patched, but we still have them leak there. So we're working on that, trying to get that taken care of. But like I said, we're on our third contractor trying to find, actually find that leak.
Didn't we have leaks in this building right after it was built?
We did.
What did you fight through right after?
Well.
We've been leaking ever since it's been built, that's kind of what I was thinking.
Yeah, but that's what you get when you have flat roofs.
Sure.
So council members, if you look around this room, it's, it's starting to show us where. So it isn't that we don't see that spot or the wallpaper or that hole over there. It is that we don't want to waste your money fixing it until we seal this room. So that's why I asked Mike to bring it up. We will be putting in a budget request for you to refresh and upgrade this eleven-year-old room, but we gotta seal that roof first.
You know, we come in, Dave and Mike's over here every time it rains. If they don't be, be here, they're in here with blowers and the dryers in there getting the floor dried out before everybody gets here in the morning times. If we had even in rain, my hat's off, and I'm trying to keep the building nice looking and all, but trust me, he hears me every time I walk in it rains.
And it's not just the chamber.
No.
Tax area, upstairs, sometimes CDS, since the day it opened.
All right, Rotary Park. Rotary Park, ready to move on to that? All right. Before you, most of you are familiar with Rotary Park, the conversation we go around, but that is kind of a snapshot there of Rotary Park, don't kind of give you update where we're at, where we're going. Of course, where the Rotary Park is actually on the north side, it's supposed to be on the north side and south side of Pardee Lane, where the actual dog park's at now, and the rail trail there on Pardee Lane where the restroom's at. Of course, we bid out the whole project, go to the next slide, Thomas. We bid out the first project for the north and south side, and of course, the lowest bid coming at one million six hundred and sixty-two thousand five hundred and seventeen dollars. And of course, the highest bid was almost two million dollars. So I come back to city council after we did that first bid, because we, we didn't have enough funds to do, to do the project. So I suggested we go ahead and just rebid it out and do the south side as a main bid, and do the north side as an alternate bid. So go to the next slide, Thomas. So the rebid for the south side, the lowest bid coming at eight hundred and eighty-nine thousand, that's just for the south side only. Of course, we have, well, it'll be on the next slide, but we have a little bit extra, or a little bit more spinners on that too, that we gotta do as far as some, we gotta buy the lights and the benches and receptacles. That's owner furnished, supplied, but installed by the contractor, which only is fifty-three thousand is what it is. But anyway, but second lowest coming at nine twenty-five, and you see the rest of the highest bid was nine forty, one fifteen. So we went ahead and accepted the lowest bid of eight eighty-nine. And of course, we've done work with this company before on some other parks back years ago, so we have trust in this company. They've been very good, and so I look forward to working with them again. They did some renovations on Peach Park and Virginia Park, some of them. Available budget, of course, we had ARPA funds that was approved by city council to move for this project with six hundred and sixty-nine thousand six hundred and fifty-four dollars, what we have. Yeah, then we had grant funds reallocated, which was four hundred and thirty-six thousand and three dollars. That gives us a total of one million one hundred and five dollars and sixty, one million one oh five six fifty-seven. When you take out the eight hundred and eighty-nine thousand on the contract, this leaves a two sixteen six fifty-seven. Then we got fifty-three thousand dollars, though, that was part of that contract, that owner furnishes light posts, the benches and trash receptacles. Then we have remaining balance of hundred and sixty-three thousand six fifty-seven. So that's what we'll still have left over after we do this project. Most of you know, we've, we had grant money through land and water, which is a hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant, said a fifty-fifty match, which we had seventy-five thousand. That's the city portion, which already been approved, is sitting there in the fund, allocated funds, grant funds. But we have a deadline of September thirtieth to have a playground in place by then. So we're gonna lose that grant, we're not gonna meet that deadline. And also, we had to resubmit the plans to them, because we're changing the scope of the work to the south side only. So it's a three to four month process, review process, what they told Melissa. So we're not going to, going to use that grant. We still been waiting on the Recreation Trails Program grant, but we still haven't got word on that yet, so we're just moving forward. We're not, we're not even gonna hold up on it, and maybe we'll reply for them grants now when we do the north side, if we ever decide to do the north, you know, the north side phase two, and that's what we'll call it. So, but that's where we're going. Is it next slide, Thomas? And that's kind of just the land and water grant that y'all approved, grant match fund, is sitting there in the match funds for seventy-five thousand, and we got twenty thousand of Recreation Trail Programs already been approved. We don't need that money now, but it's sitting there. But if we ever want to reallocate that money, we can, or this body can if you want to. But right now, I'll say, we just leave them funds where they're sitting until, unless we actually need them down the road. Do you agree with that, Melissa? Okay. But that's where we're at, on Rotary Park at Pardee Lane. But we'll move before.
Can, I don't know if we can go back to that slide that had the kind of blueprint of the park?
Yes.
I just want, I, I'm just wondering, I want to make sure that I understand which part we're doing. So you, so is it this, which, is it the side closest to the dog park or on the other side of the street?
No, it's on the same side of the dog park.
Now, is that, I, I'm not very good at reading blueprints. So is that going to include a playground over there?
Yes.
Yeah, so that's the circle.
You see the circle, that's where the inclusive playground goes.
So basically, what we're not doing at this time is just the basketball area, is that correct?
It's a basketball court, a parking lot, and a pavilion on the north side with walking trails, which is a whole lot smaller area than what the south side is.
Okay, so we're doing the bulk of it. I just wanted to make sure that I was understanding which part we were not doing.
Yeah. Well, it makes more sense to do south side, because one, it includes the playground, but two, you already got the parking lot there.
Parking, yeah.
Which don't really get utilized that much, because it's a large parking lot. And that's what the cost on that is eight hundred and eighty-nine thousand, even if it's a larger area. But when you get over to the north side, it's almost that same amount of money to do the north side, but you're talking about putting in a basketball court and a parking lot, and that's where a lot of your, your money is going right there, to on the north side.
Thanks.
Western.
And that's one thing me and Mike talked about, that we needed to go ahead and start moving this forward, because we just keep, we can't keep putting this off, putting this off. Let's cut, let's cut our losses with the grants and move forward and keep moving, because we, we got a nickel waiting on a dime.
That's right.
What we're doing here and hoping, we send it back for re-study, we might not get the money. So we're gonna sit there and tell the public, again, we didn't get the money, but we've held you up another year and a half. So let's go ahead and get started, and that's where we're pushing, where we're, where we're moving forward now.
If we can get dirt moving on this pretty quick, which we will. I think the inclusive, the inclusive playground, though, of course, Toby's got some meetings set up next Thursday to start getting this going, to try to get some sponsorships. So once you do that, I think you'll start getting a sponsorship coming in pretty quick, when they start seeing some actual work going on out in that park.
They put fences out there too already.
That's what I was gonna ask, if you update about the playground, but you just did, so. Yeah, but that's where we're at. But like I said, Toby got the meeting set up next week, and we have Josh Wagner from Miracle, which come and talk to council back in December, I think it was.
Yeah.
And, but he's helping us actually try to get these sponsorships and sell it. He's, he's really good at that, and he's also gonna help us apply for Waste Management Grant and the Crispr Reeves Grant, which equals up a hundred thousand dollars, so. And that will go to the crump, the actual, the ported place rubber membrane of that, of that playground. That's great.
And we need a, I'm sorry, I was getting ready to ask the same thing. We need a motion to move this to council.
There's nothing to move. Just, just update. We're just moving forward, they just kind of give you an update where we're at.
Okay. No questions? So, yeah, council members, I'm particularly talking to the newer council members. I've got a five-year capital plan, and I've just emailed Melissa and asked her to send it to you tonight. And I'm, I'm asking you to seriously look at it, so that you know what these department has, we know what we need, and there's a lot. And it's understandable externally of, they get your ear, and they get the mayor's ear of the things they want you to invest in, industrial parts and so forth. We have a city here too, and we want you to look at that five-year plan, and you'll get it tonight. We put a lot of thought in it, and we keeping, updating it. So it's there, and we, we take it very seriously.
Any more questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Next, we have quarterly police department report by Chief Newby.
Good evening, everybody.
So total arrests, so for the last quarter, we had six hundred and forty arrests. Now, when I say arrest, you can do your numbers like where one person may get four or five different charges, but on those arrests, those are not four or five charges, those are actually individuals. So for the year, we actually arrested two thousand six hundred and seventy-four people. Three hundred and sixty-six for the year was through traffic arrests, whether it be DUIs, whatever. Criminal arrests, nine hundred and sixty-four for the year, two forty-three for the quarter. Twenty-two juveniles for the quarter, seventy-eight for the year. The last quarter, we served two hundred and ninety-two arrest warrants, and we did thirteen hundred for the year. And in two thousand and twenty-four, we answered forty-six thousand seven hundred and forty-five calls for service. Total coll, or collisions for the last quarter, two hundred and thirty-six. We had one thousand thirty-five for the year. Just so you know, our worst intersection in the city is Seventh Street and North Drive. We had thirty-two collisions at that intersection throughout the year. We had two fatalities, both of those were on the bypass. One of those was actually ruled a suicide. It was pedestrian that intentionally walked out into traffic. We had a hundred and ninety-six collisions that involved property damage, what that means, somebody hit a mailbox or a fence or something other than another vehicle. We had eight hundred and thirty-four of those collisions for the year. Last quarter, we had fifty-seven injury accidents and two hundred and ninety-nine injury accidents for the year. Total citations, again, if somebody gets a citation, they may get more than one charge, but this is the actual citations we issued. So twelve hundred and fifteen for the last quarter, five thousand two hundred and twenty-seven for the year. Four hundred and eighty-nine of those were trafficked for the last quarter, which twenty-three thirty-one for the year. Criminal citations were two eighty-nine, eleven oh five for the year. Ninety-eight juvenile citations last quarter, and two hundred and sixty-seven of those for the year. Seizures for the year, we seized seventy-two thousand eight hundred and thirty-six dollars, sixty-three cents for the year. We took a hundred and seventy-one guns off the streets. We seized just under nine pounds of methamphetamine, fentanyl, which is by far our worst problem we have right now. One point two one pounds of powder and three hundred and ninety-three point five pills. Marijuana, a little over a hundred and thirty-eight pounds, and cocaine, a little over a pound. So this picture right here, according to the DEA, this picture shows two milligrams of fentanyl, which is a deadly dose. Two thousand and twenty-four, we seized enough fentanyl that could have caused two hundred and seventy-four thousand four hundred and twenty-three lethal doses. Sixty-one, go back one. And last year, we did one thousand eight hundred and ninety-seven, so we're, we're moving in the right direction. For our criminal reports, tho, those numbers are going down, which is good. So school safety, as you all know, the public school has implemented their own police department. From our understanding, they're projected to take over all the schools in August of twenty-six, and I believe that's about the same time they're opening the, the mega school. Talked with the councilman Sumner and chief Cease of the, with the public schools, and told them whatever we can do with the police department to, to help them get everything going. We would be here and whatever assistance they need. Next slide. So before questions, well, does anybody have any questions about anything that was in there? So for our reports, if there's anything that you all would like to know, different stats other than this, maybe if you just want to know stats for your ward specifically, what maybe is the biggest problems that we're having in, in your ward or any specific ward? Anything that you need like that, feel free to email me, and I can, I can get those reports and I can send them straight to you. So if there's ever anything you guys would like to know other than what we put up here, feel free to ask. All right, thank you all.
Next, call on chief Futra for code enforcement updates.
Good evening, everyone. So for the new council members, in two thousand and twenty-four, the fire department started a new division where we took over code enforcement for the city, that's through our fire prevention division. So. You doing it? You want me to do it? Okay. All right. So code enforcement for the city, next one please. So we, we, we focus on three things, and it's through the, uh, International Property Maintenance Code. This board adopted city ordinance that covers property standards, property maintenance, and abandoned vehicles. So for our property standards, that's the majority of what we do. That's our grass, trash, and weeds. That's a lot of the complaints we get. We go out every day with that. Very busy with that. You know, when Mike talked about the abatements that they do, a lot of times that's because of us with grass and, uh, lots that are not getting maintained. Uh, property, next one please, property maintenance is our property maintenance code that covers our buildings. Uh, any unsafe structures, whether that's inside or outside. Uh, we do that in conjunction with our fire prevention. Uh, sometimes we do that through the fire department. We'll talk about that in a minute through life safety issues. And other times we do that through, uh, code enforcement. A lot of those issues go to a code enforcement board. That meeting is here. Uh, we present that. It's set over by Doug and that board decides what happens to these properties. Uh, junked and abandoned vehicles, uh, we cover those if they're on your property. If they're, if they're junked and abandoned on the street, they are, the police department's to handle. But if they are in your yard, you know, if you've got a yard and it's got four or five vehicles in it, it's ours. So we take care of that. So this is how code enforcement works in the city. Um, you're welcome to read through all that, but you get a complaint. Uh, a lot of our stuff is complaint driven or we drive around and see it. Uh, we do an initial inspection. If we find that it is a violation of code enforcement, then we do a NOV, which is a notice of violation. Uh, they have several days to reach out to us. Um, and fix those issues. If they do not in that timeframe, we send them a citation. Again, they have a timeframe. We do a re-inspection. And then a lot of times we either have that abated, or we take it to the code enforcement board who votes on that to, to see what we need to do with that. So for twenty twenty-four, we had a hundred and seventy-six complaints. We worked a hundred and fifteen vehicles. Uh, just at a thousand, uh, property standards or grass, trash, and weeds issues, and a hundred and sixty-six, uh, property maintenance issues. So this is why we do code enforcement. So this property, uh, had sat here for a couple of years. We took it to the code enforcement board. Uh, they allowed us to, to take this down, and that is what it looks like today. This is another one. Uh, this was a burnout. Uh, there was nothing in the structure inside it. It had been for a while. Next one please. Uh, this is Broad Street. It was a owner demo. I'll talk about the difference in owner demos and city demos here in just a second. So this one, um, this is our goal, right? This is one of the things that when Troy talked to us about doing this and the mayor talked to us, was this property right here was, was one of our focuses and what we wanted to do. This property, uh, at nine twenty-four beer, this is a before picture. It had received a notice of violation. It was on our radar. Next picture. And then we had a house fire. So there was, this house had no electric to it. It had no utilities in it, but it had somebody living in it and starting fires to stay warm. On this year, on January the first, twenty twenty-five, we had a house fire. The house fire contract called in at ten fifty. Go to the next one. So we extinguished that fire that night. At nine o'clock in the morning, we were there with our arson team, who did the arson investigation, and our code enforcement team. Go to the next one. And this is why we had code enforcement there. So this building, this house was no longer structurally sound. It had lots of issues structurally. So because of the, the worry of collapse, we, we cannot keep people out of these houses. We cannot keep the homeless out of these houses. We cannot keep the kids in these neighborhoods out of these houses. And so the next one please. Go back one. So we did an emergency demo that day at four o'clock. Now, we do that through the fire service. We have the authority through KRS. We know that. We've been to court with it. Uh, any house that is a life safety issue, a structure that's a life safety issue, we can take that house through, through the fire service, uh, through the KRS. So we had the fire that night. Go to the next picture, please. That's what it looks like today. So within twenty-four hours, we extinguished the fire. We investigated for arson. We had code enforcement over there and we had emergency demo done to that house. Uh, we have reached out to the owner. He was good with it. He knew that it was happening every step of the way. Uh, not always we can do that. We have found that a lot of these structures that were taken down, the owners aren't from here. Sometimes people don't even know they own the property. It was maybe deed it to them when somebody passed away. It is very hard to track down some of these people. A lot of times they live out of state. Uh, go to the next slide, please. So for twenty twenty-four, we did forty-five demos. Thirty-four of them we did through the city, uh, which what that means is we take that property on the demo, that property is leaned, the cost for demo is leaned. We do that through a bid process that we do once a year. We have that bid process open now and who demos that property. Uh, we lean that property. They can't sell it or transfer it till the city has paid back for that demo. Eleven demos, we told, they went through here to the, uh, through the code enforcement board. We told them we were taking it. They decided to pay for the demo themselves. So there's no lien on the property. Uh, the future of code enforcement, I had a, a meeting with Troy this morning. We talked about some things. We, we wanna make it easier for our people. Uh, it is not super friendly, user-friendly on our website to, to make a code enforcement complaint. There are some, uh, some apps out there that, that I've, I've talked to Troy about, and he's uh, gonna talk to Dara with about that the city will be able to have, uh, three-on-one is one, uh, to, to make it a little bit easier. So we're looking at things to, to make things for code enforcement better. Next. This is how you report a concern now. It is on our website. We put that on social media. We talk about it on the radio. Um, and they do use it. Next. Any questions?
So council members, and I say this, this is good and bad. You're probably the most aggressive city in Kentucky when it comes to codes. There's no bad side is you have to be. And there's a consequence to what he's doing. The more aggressive they are, all those demos he's talking about, as Holly can tell you, they create vacant lots. And we've got as many vacant lots as a size city as Louisville, and there's seven hundred and fifty thousand people. We shouldn't. We shouldn't have eight, nine hundred thousand vacant lots, but this is where we are. So there's a consequence to what they do. It impacts CDS, it impacts Doug's office, it impacts finance, it impacts uh, Mike's and abatement and cleaning up and public works. So we're working on something for you. And it'd be comprehensive. Uh, we, you funded us last year to bring in Center for Community Progress to help us ramp up and amplify, um, the Land Bank Authority. And we're putting together a plan, and if the mayor signs off on it, we're gonna bring it to you to address these lots in big chunks. We're not gonna eat this elephant with a spoon in it. It won't be cheap. It will be aggressive. And we'll kick that can to you in terms of where to find the cost. But there's a cost in not doing it. It impacts quality of life. It impacts property values. It impacts fire, codes, police, everybody, public works, and we can't go on like this. You cannot turn this city around. And it is equally as important, and you keep hearing me saying this, I'm gonna bring it to you with the fervency. It's Carter bringing EDC. If we had to go in closed session, I'll try to find a way. We're at that level. And we cannot sit in a town of thirty thousand people and have a thousand vacant lots. That's neglect. It's gone on too long, and things have to change.
And we also gotta make sure we look at this because you look at how many liens that we are putting on properties. We have a stack of liens go all the way to the ceiling just about. Doug looks at them at least once a week or more because I call him where we at, or Melissa's on the phone. I think he's starting to get the eject, but when I call him someday, he's been, no, I'm thinking. Uh, but now, we have liens and liens and liens, and we, and liens are only good for ten years. So, all right, we got a ten years worth of liens, and some of them are got fifteen years worth of liens on them. So we lost that one. We gotta start looking at this realistically. How are we gonna hang, get a handle on this?
We will start with your who's who. Tom is working very diligently on that right now. Of our most frequent violators. They were allowed. This didn't just happen. They were allowed. And they knew it. They knew that they didn't have to cut that grass and they could move the Louisville, and they cut their grass there. But they left it here because they knew the city would cut it. And there'd be no consequence, and there wasn't. Things have to change. And I'm going to be very aggressive here. They don't care, so we don't care. That's how aggressive we have to be.
Well, I think we all realize, you know, this, the city has a need in our, in our growth plan and our growth hopes for homes that can house the folks that we're hoping to, uh, you know, bring, bring to the city of Hopkinsville. So uh, I, I'm sure that there's probably a Venn diagram coming in the future somewhere where we might be able to overlap what you're doing now with the need that we have so that we can address that effectively.
Thank you. Uh, next on this is, uh, quarterly business list review. Business list was included in the packet. Uh, are there any changes or questions to the business list? No questions. Next is item L. That's, uh, Net Committee of the Whole Chair and Vice Chair, and I'll turn it over to Doug.
At this time, I'm going to, um, open the floor for nominations for the Chair of the Committee of the Whole. We don't need a motion in a second. We just need a nomination. If there's only one nomination, that that individual will, uh, take the seat by acclamation. If there are more than one, then we will vote accordingly. So at this time, the floor is open for nominations for Committee, uh, of the Whole Chair. Yes.
I'd like to nominate Councilmember Martin.
Mr. Martin has been nominated. Are they? Yes.
I'd like to nominate Donald Marsh.
Marsh has been nominated. Are there any additional nominations? Seeing none, the
I'd like to, uh, nominate Travis Martin.
I already nominated him. Already done.
Well, well, that's what I wanted to talk about. A lot of people been lobbying to get their votes across, and there's a lot of pressure, especially on those new ones here. It's almost like it's an initiation. But, man, we're here to do one thing, and that's to make sure that we have a great community. And let's not hold something against somebody because they wasn't in favor of this person. Let's work together for the greater cause. Thank you.
So Mr. Martin and Mr. Marsh have both been nominated. Are there any further nominations? Seeing none, the nominations are closed, and I'll turn it over to the clerk to call the roll. To announce, yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes, yes.
Which one?
Oh, Martin, Martin.
Councilmember Stallins. Marsh. Councilmember Marsh.
Marsh.
Councilmember Crabtree.
Martin.
Councilmember Craig.
Martin.
Councilmember Martin.
Martin.
Councilmember Sumner.
Martin.
Councilmember Meek.
Martin.
Councilmember Bogard. Councilmember Velez. Councilmember Bell.
Martin.
You say Martin?
Martin.
Councilmember Drouin.
Martin.
All right, so our winner would be Travis Martin for Chair.
Congratulations, Mr. Martin. You will assume that role next month. And now we will, uh, open the floor for nominations for Committee of the Whole Vice Chair.
I'd like to nominate Councilman Marsh.
I was gonna say the same thing.
Mr. Marsh has been nominated. Are there any additional nominations?
Nominate Amy Craig.
Ms. Craig has been nominated. Any further nominations? Seeing none, the floor is closed for nominations, and I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Smith.
Marsh.
Councilmember Stallins.
Marsh.
Councilmember Marsh.
Marsh.
Councilmember Crabtree.
Marsh.
Councilmember Craig. Councilmember Martin.
Craig.
Councilmember Sumner.
Craig.
Councilmember Meek.
Craig.
Councilmember Bogard.
Marsh.
Councilmember Velez. Councilmember Bell.
Marsh.
Councilmember Drouin.
Craig.
So our Vice Chair is Marsh.
Congratulations. We've now gone, we have a Committee of the Whole Chair and Vice Chair. And the next item is to select a council presiding officer in the mayor's absence. Uh, this is to, it only in council, not in Committee of the Whole, uh, just in the mayor's absence. And if you do sit in that chair during the mayor's absence, you will have a vote unlike the mayor. So, uh, it's just to run the meeting in the mayor's absence. And so we'll, uh, have the same process that the nom, the floor is open for nominations.
I would like to nominate Crabtree.
Ms. Crabtree's been nominated.
Nominate Amy Craig.
Ms. Craig has been nominated.
Councilman Bell.
Mr. Bell has been nominated. Any further nominations? Seeing none, the floor is closed for nominations. I'll turn it over to the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Smith.
Councilman Bell.
Councilmember Stallins.
Councilman Bell.
Councilmember Marsh.
Councilman Bell.
Councilmember Crabtree.
Craig.
Councilmember Craig. Councilmember Martin.
Craig.
Councilmember Sumner.
I have a question. So I'm confused. I wanna, people are being nominated. Do you want the position? Because I've heard mixed things. And, and if you don't want the position, I don't wanna be conflicted on where I'm picking. If you already know in your heart that you don't have time or interest in doing it because, you, you know what I mean? Is, do we, are we allowed to ask those things before? Because things you hear and then you come in here to vote, and I haven't heard them. So now I'm confused if some people want the nomination that was given. I understand it's, it's nice to be nominated, but if, if, you know, it's a lot of time commitment. I'm just trying to figure out.
Well, the, the nominations have been made, and unless they withdraw from the nomination, then those, those names are on the floor for votes.
Let me, let me withdraw my name, and that way that'd make it a little easier to vote maybe, maybe not.
Mr. Crabtree has, has withdrawn.
Councilmember Meek.
Craig.
Councilmember Bogard.
Bell.
Councilmember Velez. Councilmember Bell.
Bell.
Councilmember Drouin.
Bell.
So presiding officer in the mayor's absence will be Councilmember Bell.
Thank you.
So.
I abstain.
Next move to item six, uh, unfinished business. There's no unfinished business. So we're going to item seven. That's new business. And I'll call on Ms. Holly Bog for inner-city Reyes fund reprogramming.
Good evening. Thank you all for the opportunity to present this information to you. I do have a, a quick PowerPoint I'm gonna pull up. You have the information in your packet, but I wanted to provide you just a little bit of background information. Is it on the screen in front of you? Not yet. It's in front of me, but it's not up there. Yeah. Okay, is it there now?
There we go.
Okay, good deal. Thank you. Uh, so this is just a, a, a presentation to kind of bring you up to speed regarding what we're asking for in the municipal order that was included in your packet. And this is for the transfer of twenty-seven thousand, eleven dollars from the line items that are listed in that municipal order, one being the inter-agency governmental task force, and one being homeownership assistance. The reason we're bringing this before you is because we have depleted the legacy funding line item that pertains to new construction incentives. That is what funds housing assistance programs. So those are for new construction, single-family, multifamily, and, um, duplexes. So we have recently, through the Land Bank Authority, transferred approximately twenty properties to private developers in the legacy Hopkinsville neighborhoods. We know we are going to be receiving requests for funding associated with the incentive programs that this body has adopted. We do have some residual funds left in the inter-agency governmental task We do have some residual funds left in the inter-agency governmental task force line item. So we're requesting that that $2,011 be transferred over so that we can utilize that funding for any applications that are received for the new construction incentives. Also, in the homeownership assistance line item, that is what is funding empowerment plans. So those are for single-family homeowner occupied units that are in the legacy Hopkinsville neighborhoods. And they received 100 and, I want to say $152,000 in the last budget cycle. There are funds remaining in that line item. Funds have been spent in the amount of, I think I have that on the next slide. Yes, funds in that line item have been spent in the amount of 90, I'm sorry. 72,877 will be remaining. So we have spent out of the 152,000, we have $97,000 remaining. So we are requesting that those funds be transferred. And just for the benefit of everyone, not just the new council members, but for existing council members as well, we wanted to bring to you the fund balances as of January the 13th, 2025. So this is what is remaining in the entire legacy Hopkinsville budget. In the demolition line item, once you take out encumbrances, there'll be 191,000 remaining there. Under the housing assistance programs, the remaining less that encumbrances will be 27,000 if you agree to authorize the transfer of those funds. Under neighborhood engagement, 7,600. Under the land bank authority, nothing. Troy mentioned the Center for Community Progress Contract. That is wrapping up, so all of those funds will be spent. Under the downtown incentive programs, remaining less encumbrance would be $219,000. We're presenting a request to you tonight to earmark $200,000 for an upper-story housing initiative. There are no funds remaining under the educational job training program, none under the inter-agency governmental task force if this request is authorized. Under downtown events, programming, and marketing, there'll be 10,540. Nothing under marketing and public relations or the Odd Fellows Building. Under homeownership incentives, there'll be 72,877. Under the 7th Street Gateway entrance, there's still $50,000 remaining in that line item. But we have put out a request for qualifications for that to be developed. We're in the process of bringing in the two top firms that were reviewed and selected to provide that contract. So we will have a contract on that soon. And then the Hopkinsville real estate development proposal, there are no funds remaining under that because we have an existing contract with Jeff Siegler and Jeff Sadler. They are wrapping up their work on that as well. So we'll be presenting to you a real estate development proposal for the downtown area. And then finally, the rental rehabilitation program. This is the new program that was created last year. And we have $25,000 worth of encumbrances in that line item right now. So that would leave a balance of 15,100. So out of the total legacy Hopkinsville budget, again, I'm gonna go back one slide. We're requesting a transfer of $27,011 to fund any new incentive applications for new construction that come through. And I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Don't have any questions? We'll need a motion in a second to forward to council.
Motion, second.
Motion by Mr. Marsh, second by Travis. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
To council.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Next, we have item B, the Mayor's 24/7 Downtown Initiative. That's Ms. Holly, also.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. Thank you again. You have included in your packet a copy, a draft copy of the program. But again, I have a presentation just to walk you through a couple of the things that we wanted to point out. Is it in this, on the screen in front of you yet? No? Okay. I see it up here now. Do you all see it?
No.
Okay. Hold tight. Okay. So these are just some of the key points and objectives. This is the Mayor's 24/7 Downtown Initiative, which is a program that is intended to help create a 24-hour population in the downtown area, hence the name 24/7 Downtown Initiative. Studies indicate that retail follows population. So the more folks that we have living in the downtown area, the more desirable that area comes for retailers, restaurants, and craft beverage establishments to locate. This aligns with Mayor Knight's Growing Home Initiative. He asked us to take a look at this, and this is what we have come up with. There are some existing incentive programs that are available in the downtown area that help provide funding for the acquisition of properties and the renovation of properties. And there's additional money available if they are proposing a commercial use on the first floor and a residential use on the upper floor. But this program is intended to enhance the amount of money that is available whenever people are looking at doing residential development. Right now, the existing 50/50 matching grant program will reimburse a property owner 50% of their expenses associated with the renovation of the building, not to exceed $20,000. Under this program, and it doesn't matter how many residential units they create. They can create one unit in the building, or they can create five units in the building, and the existing program will reimburse them a maximum of $20,000. This opens up the pool a little bit larger and allows for property owners to be reimbursed on a unit basis, depending on the number of residential units that they are proposing to make on their upper floors. So this does not provide any funding for the renovation of a first floor for residential purposes. It would be only second, third, fourth, and then however many floors. I think we only have one building that has four floors downtown. But this will assist with reducing the vacancy rate in those upper floors, creating the demand for additional restaurant, retail, and craft beverage establishments. We are suggesting that a minimum of 675 square feet be the, the standard with one bathroom and one, at least an efficiency kitchen. We did not suggest a minimum number of bedrooms in the event someone wanted to create a studio apartment, and there wouldn't necessarily be a separate area to classify as a bedroom. Any properties that are being renovated within 100 feet of the rail line, this program would require noise abatement materials. The recommended indoor decibel for residential use is 45 or lower. This program would provide a reimbursement for 50% of the materials and labor, not to exceed $15,000 per residential unit being developed. This would be for new units in the upper floors only or existing vacant units if they have been vacant for no less than 24 months. This does not provide for the construction of new structures. So a new building on a vacant lot would not qualify for this program, but they would qualify for the existing 50/50 matching grant program. Again, this is an effort just to try to enhance and encourage property owners to develop those upper floors and provide residential uses. There would be a, a five-year deed restriction that would be placed on the property for continued residential use. A minimum six-month lease. So this wouldn't be for short-term rentals. This wouldn't fund Airbnbs and things like that. I know I'm loud, but I think I've gone out, but I'm gonna try to talk a little bit louder. Preapproval would be required for all the projects. So a light of entry would have to be executed, allowing code enforcement officials through the fire department as well as building code officials through CDS to inspect the property and make a determination on what the existing conditions are. Reimbursement would only be made upon issuance of a certificate of occupancy and the submission of the receipts and proof of payment showing how much money had been spent. Applicants would be given one year to complete the project. If there were extensions that needed to be granted, they could request that so long as there were a legitimate reason, and that would be reviewed for approval. I mentioned newly constructed structures would not be eligible. Any exterior improvements that are associated with a building renovation would be subject to the Renaissance Design Standards that are currently in place for anyone who's participating in the incentive programs. This would be administered by the Local Development Corporation, who is the nonprofit associated with downtown development and responsible for managing the existing incentive programs. The funds would be managed by the City of Hopkinsville, though. So the finance department would be issuing payments to property owners upon the receipt of a request from the Local Development Corporation. We would make biannual reports to city council so that you could look at the program, tweak it as necessary, decide it's great, decide you hate it, change it, make any amendments that you would want to do. This is under the existing funding that is available for the downtown incentive program, so we are not requesting any additional funds. The recommended boundaries are the entire downtown Renaissance District. So that yellow shaded area is the downtown Renaissance District, and it essentially runs from 4th Street on the north to 13th Street on the south. It does extend a little bit onto 14th Street on the east side. And then the east boundary would be Campbell Street, and the west boundary would be the intersection of 7th and 9th Street. This is the recommended financing. Comes from the 2023-2024 fiscal year budget, where $150,000 was allocated for the downtown incentive programs and the 24-25 fiscal year budget, where 50,000 was allocated. And the expenses are broken out below with 170,000 allocated for the actual incentive program cost, 20,000 for administrative costs, and 10,000 for marketing costs. And again, that's a $200,000 allocation that we're, we're requesting be set aside out of the remaining legacy Hopkinsville downtown incentive line item. This is intended to be a pilot program so that, again, it can be tweaked as needed, abandoned if necessary, or enhanced if it ends up being something that proves successful. We are aware of several property owners downtown who are interested in undertaking upper-story renovations, and something like this would greatly assist them in being able to move forward with that. But I would be happy to answer any questions you may have regarding the proposal.
Is there any cities in the state that are, okay, that are currently doing this? And how have, how long have those programs been going on? Where are they in, you know, how are they doing? Have they been a success?
Paducah started one.
Okay.
To the point that it was so successful, they rescinded their incentives because they were all taken. And all of you have been to Paducah, you see.
Yes.
It's, it's, you can't not lure people downtown. You have to place them downtown. So what Holly is offering to you is foot tracking. And as you think of housing needs and trying to attract soldiers off the, you need young people. Not everybody's wanting a split-story house to cut grass every day.
Right.
And every apartment that comes available downtown is taken. And then you open one up for 1,500 or 2,000, I thought, well, they're not gonna be at that. They're taken. Every time we open one, it's taken. This is to start luring them down, and then you'll start to see your supermarket or your pharmacy, they will follow the people. So this is a great incentive. We tried to bring it to you a few years ago. It's been successful everywhere it's tried. Thriving cities have people living downtown. They're not driven by suburbs.
And you may or may not be aware, but you own a property in downtown Hopkinsville, the First City Bank Building at the corner of 9th and Main Street. We manage those apartments for you. There are five that are on the second floor. They're always occupied. We can count on 100% occupancy rate in, in that building. If we ever get a vacancy, it never stays vacant for more than two or three weeks. And similarly, the Local Development Corporation owns the Odd Fellows Building. There are four units on that second floor. We're looking at trying to develop the third floor as well, and we, we never have any vacancies there either. So.
And these are buildings without elevators. These are walk-ups.
Right.
Like you have in New York City and places like that, and they're still snatched as soon as they hit the market.
Questions?
Yeah, just so the whole idea of the village commercial kind of district and what we have in mind here is, is, is great, I think. I was just gonna ask, do we have some kind of an estimate of the number of units that could be developed in that district?
With this funding, 11 units could. With unlimited funding, hundreds.
I mean, that's it, isn't it?
Donald, I've counted it, it's 46.
46.
That we could do, but we don't have the funding for it.
Right.
You know, what we gotta do, we gotta start somewhere.
Right.
And we see we're getting an impact when we come back next year and the budget say, hey, this is what we're doing. People are taking advantage of it. If they don't take advantage of it, we don't keep funding.
Right.
It's just really just a pilot program and see where we're gonna start.
Yeah.
And if we take this money and move it over here, and it just, we'll start seeing what we can get. Breaking momentum, or, or we just spinning our wheels? And that's what we're really looking for right now.
All right, so we have a few questions. Part of this is a lot of work. First, I like the idea of the great, the idea of. But I, I, when I read through this, I just wrote a whole bunch of questions for you to come over this. So was it percentage versus $10,000 that the LDC is paying?
And what does that management mean? What are they doing? What is management of it?
They would review the applications that are received. They would walk through the application process with the applicant and determine if the project meets the standards of the incentive program. And then they would manage the, the project throughout the course of, of construction. They don't perform inspections necessarily. That would be the building code officials. But they would be the ones authorizing the payment in compliance with the incentive program. That's not something, they currently administer the existing incentive programs for downtown, but this would be a new program, so it would be additional responsibilities on their part.
But the city's finance team oversees the-
They would write the checks.
Write the checks.
We would submit a request for payment to them, and they would write the checks. We would prepare the, we're not suggesting mortgage restrictions or placing mortgages on the property, but enforcing the deed restriction that would accompany the payment.
So the money that we pay to the LDC, is it a flat percentage? Or is it based on how much that we actually award out?
Initially, it's, it's 10%. So initially-
Right off the top.
Off the top, it's, it's being proposed as 10% in the, the slide there that's in front of you.
So if it's never used, it's still 10%?
It, that's your call.
In essence. But I mean, that's what we're proposing here. That's what's-
That's at council's discretion.
Um, and again, excuse me, I've got several questions. And is that percentage, is that, if, if we run it this year, or is that over the life of the program? Is it just per year?
It's for the first phase, so the, the piloting of the program. You would have the ability to look at what you believed an appropriate percentage would be, whether it be 10%. A lot of grants offer 20% administrative fees that are associated with the delivery of that service. That would be, that would be your decision. That would be at council's discretion.
So the LDC is mostly to oversee the application process?
The application, right, the application-
Because they don't do the building inspection, and they don't really do the finance part. So it's just to handle and help fill out the application process? And to make sure that these are the ones we want to move forward?
Correct, correct. With staff services provided through CDS.
The per unit, you mentioned 15,000. And a building could have multiple units in it. So does that mean that one developer could come in and potentially use up all the money?
That is a possibility.
Okay.
Unless you wanted to put a restriction on the number of units that one property owner could be eligible for.
Well, the reason it, it caught my attention when, when you were going through it is you mentioned it was the first time doing a per-unit thing. So I was just asking, obviously, that was new, but it, so I wanted to make sure that meant, one developer could come in and use the whole amount of money to develop theirs? There's nothing in there, like if you had three people down there at the same time, which would be great that we had that many different people developing, I'm sure. But one of them potentially could get all the money, and the others would just be out of luck for the time being, or come back and see if we could find more? Is that, I understand that right?
We wrote into the, the program that it would be a first-come, first-served basis to be considered.
Okay. And then I think my last question, the 10%, let me flip over here where I may know, the 10% for the marketing aspect of it. Mayor Troy, that this is kind of geared towards one of you all, I guess. I know Troy, the, the PIO for the city was a, a dream of yours for many years, and we have that now. And last night, Mayor, when we were sitting up here, and the idea of changing the times back in, in your sense, I think you said, we'll find another way to try to save a little bit of money. So my question is, we have a fully capable PIO. I know PIO's a little different than marketing, but she seems to do a really good job. Is that something that- Is that something that?
She's the one who would be providing the marketing assistance.
So we're giving her an additional 10%?
I'm not saying that she would receive the money herself, but that money would be allocated for the city to provide the marketing.
For the marketing?
We always try free marketing council member first, but then certain requirements we have, and putting things in the newspaper, we have to pay.
Okay, yeah, no, I understand. I, I didn't know that was the same, I was, when I read that and see that here, just the first thing I thought was, let's use what we have.
And, and a, a great example of why we need to do this, or some of you know, and I'm forgetting the name. The liquor store where Applebee's back there used to be.
Fancy.
Fancy. And as Carter was leaving, Terry Parker was here, that gentleman called here, and he wanted to come get his incentives, because he just heard about it. But his liquor store was open, and people were buying, and it was too late. And I was asked by council to call him and tell him not to come put him in that situation. But we take for granted that sometimes certain developers, the same ones, keep hearing about it. People have moved in this town, people have started this, and they don't know. That's one of the reasons we wanted the PIO. They don't know about these projects, and so we're going to treat the town just like it's branded.
Thank you, I think it's.
Yes, sir.
I'll have you. So I guess my question to us is, is that normal, the per-unit? Is that, for, I guess, for me y'all that have been here? Where one person could spend all of that money? I mean, is that, this is where we discuss this? Yes, no? Because I'm still looking for some answers to understand it.
Brand-new program.
Yes, like a brand-new tub.
It's a brand-new thing that we're just trying to see where it's at. And I think we've got to really look at it. And I understand what you're saying, using, let's say, I just use, let's just use the Ben Woodpea's property here. He comes in, he's got six apartments.
Correct.
I think it's six is what our study just showed us the other day. He brings in all six, and he gets all six, $15,000 per door. Okay, here we go. So, you know, but I understand what you're saying, and I'm just, we're trying to get some kind of, see if somebody's really interested or not interested right now where we're at right now on this. And I understand your question there, because I hate to know I come up here and said, all right, I want to do this.
Right.
Oh, I'm, I'm, I'm a day late and a dollar short, and I got to wait around for the next, next set of funding.
So we, we kind of have a, a little bit of a precedence with this, with the rental rehab program? That's limited to two per individual?
Two per year, per individual.
Okay, so that might be something that someone on council, if you wanted to limit it, we have something like that already, if you wanted to spread it around.
I'm not saying necessarily that I do or I don't. I'm just asking because it, it's foreign to me. I, I, I don't know. It just, I think it's great if we have three or four developers downtown, and they're all fighting over it, and then you're back in here going, well, one used it all. I, I think that's great. We're in a really good spot. But I also would hate that one developer come in and got six of them, or however many that is that run it out, at the same time somebody's over here, and their paperwork just got reviewed second. So do we award all of them at one time off of one application? And, and even though I was second, I don't get any of this time? That, and that, now we're sitting there going, well, is it really a fair process to everybody? Because the hope is, we get more than one developer downtown. So it's just a question, trying to understand what the best, what does Paducah do?
I'm not sure what their approach was. I don't think that they had a limit on the number that, I've read their program.
Yeah, I just, y'all used that for a reference, so I was, I was curious.
I think we're trying something new for the first year, and if, if it needs tweaking in the second year, I mean. And if, if they're knocking her door down, she can come back and ask for more money. Yeah, and these are, these are also issues we can talk about once we get it into the council floor and, and do that. And if we have to or want to limit them for the first time, we can. Otherwise, if we get enough interest, we should think about expanding that. That's a good thing.
Right, throw it out there and see what happens.
Great problem.
It's going to be a great problem to have, and even if we just limit it to the first, all right. I even want to use Travis's example. You know, Travis has got a building downtown, he's got four apartments, okay? He going to get the first, his thing coming up, the first four. You're not coming over and see, you play, you turn in the application, you get two. And other guy's got 10. You know, let's don't limit it, let's limit it to at least just the minimum of four, no more than four. On the, you can't just come in and say, we're going to redo the whole Main Street. One guy owns the whole block.
It would be great if they could. So like I said, great prob, great problem, and I like the idea.
Yes.
I just want to understand better, and those are some of the questions that came out.
Was that, do we need to limit it to four?
I think we ought to limit it to four, just so that way nobody, not one person coming to suck up all the money.
Yeah.
I concur.
Look at it again next year.
Right, and then we look at it next year, all right, where do we look? Holly, you come and say, Mayor, we need more, we need to raise the limit from four.
Sure.
So is it appropriate to make a motion to limit it to four?
For the council with that limit?
Could they, oh, sorry. If, if, if they filed for four and they used it, and nobody else has filed behind them, and they come file again, I think that would be fine. They're like number two again.
Right.
But if you have three or four at the same time, I just think it would be kind of crummy that one person got all of it.
Yeah, because I was the third one in the door, and I got struck out.
Right.
And I understand where you're coming from right now.
Yes, sir.
I guess my thought is, you, you really presented a valid point, Councilman Sumner, and I'm over here, and my wheels are spinning. But I guess something that we need to think about while we also consider, I mean, yes, we are casting the line on this. This is something new. We kind of need to test the waters and see what we're going to get. But do we want, you know, if, I do think there should be limitations. That is my personal opinion. Because would we prefer to put this money, that is Hopkinsville's money, into a big corporation that comes in from, you know, another state? And they're like, hey, we want to buy these, build these, and rent these, but we're going to be over in, you know, South Carolina, Georgia, New York, whatever. Do we want to give them that money? Or would we rather encourage local people to Kentucky to say, hey, you come and invest your money so that our money is going back into our own people? And I think that setting that limitation definitely is going to kind of set that standard. And so you kind of have to figure out what's your main goal? Is it to get all of these as quickly as possible? Or is it to have a slower process and say, okay, well, you know, we may not get all these big corporations in here wanting to take over, you know, 100 units and get all of this grant money, but we're putting money back into our own people? Which, I mean, speaking for the people of Hopkinsville, I think that would be the best route to take.
As our constituents, I think we need, we owe it to our constituents that own these properties downtown. If we can help them with that, I, I agree with that.
Good point.
So, you know, but if you come in, and let's say we buy four or five buildings here, and a big corporation, as you're saying, if we set a number, that way they came to suck all the money, say, here we are. And that's, that's where I.
I'll take anybody's money. It's all, it's all green.
It's all green.
Council members, I would add that we are talking small businesses. And we did give us a small business commission, and we don't really put these kind of restrictions on large industrial park people. But we're doing it on small businesses. So it's something that.
That's true.
We didn't tell us send and all these people what they had to do. So it is, and, and it would be a great, I mean, if we had to come back to you, I'd love to see a special session on everybody wanting to buy up downtown. That would just be fantastic.
Just from an economy of scale perspective, if someone owns a building, you know, the more units that they're developing, the more cash flow they're going to have. And if they're developing them at the same time, it just makes it more affordable for them. I'm not trying to encourage you to not set a limit, I'm not trying to discourage that at all. But there are, there are at least three property owners that I'm working with right now that are interested in an upper-story housing incentive program. I believe that their properties will yield more than four units.
So.
At least some of them will.
So with that in mind, that knowledge that, that you have there, what would that number be if they all came in and were able to develop them fully?
You know, you said it was 11, right?
11 is what this amount of funding would provide. I, I, I believe that one property owner can probably yield 10 units. Another one can probably yield four units, and another one can probably yield four or five.
If they, if we set a limit, you think they would back out of building?
I'm not sure. I, I mean, I don't think that would deter them from moving forward, but they may not move forward as quickly with all of the units that they were planning on.
Potentially only one of them is going to get it anyway. If I'm the person with the 10 units and I walk in, the other ones aren't going to get it anyway. So.
We earn more money at it.
Off of, and that's kind of my question now, off of what you're saying, off the knowledge that you have, I'm hypothetical of how many could come in and how many could develop, what is that amount of money that would be utilized if we did that for all of them?
Not knowing what the cost of construction would be for the units, I'm not sure that I can answer that, because it's going to depend on, you know, what level of renovation is going to be required.
Well, the maximum amount.
Maximum amount is 15. That's correct. Maximum amount would be 15.
And how many units are you saying total? If, if everything went great, and next thing we know, three developers are down there, and they're, they're building in all of those downtown buildings, and Troy gets to see his people walking around downtown. What's that number?
19 units right now.
19 units?
19 units.
19 times 15.
With, I mean, and that's with, you know, that's not marketing the program, because it doesn't exist yet. It's just that folks have, you know, approached us about, they're interested in doing some.
Well, it's good. No, but I think it's good for us to know if that was to happen, and we had an opportunity to get that many people and that many things developed, what would it cost if we did this incentive?
Yeah, I'm going to have to say, Melissa, what's 19 times 15,000? Because I don't have my phone in front of me, and I don't do math well in my head.
285.
So only $85,000 more, minus the, the, the 10% for?
Admin and marketing.
You use up what you got and come back.
That's right, we use what we got, and we're coming back too, and say, hey, I need more money. I need a budget a minute.
Thanks. I, I think we're jumping a little ahead of ourselves, quite honestly, since the program doesn't exist yet. If, if, I think that we need to just roll this out there so that we can start and see what the interest is. Let's say in the future, all 19 units want to be, you know, using this program or whatever. We could always, like, look at increasing the funding in the future, but we can't do any of that until we actually just approve what we've got right here. So my thought is, we approve this, and then let's see where it goes. And then if we need to make some changes in the future, we, we can. But that's, that's my two cents.
Agreed. I agree.
So we need a motion?
We already have a motion.
Motion.
Motion, say.
I think Melissa wants to ask the question.
So we're approving this with a limitation of 2,400? Or are we just first come, first served?
No limitation.
No limitation.
Yeah. We're, we're just sending it on to the council, then, then we can have this discussion again.
Right now, nothing's being approved, it's just going on to council.
Well, I, I would just ask you to restate the motion in a second.
Who made the? I made the motion to send it on to the council.
I made a second.
As presented.
Motion by Marsh.
I either made the motion or the second, I can't remember which one.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This is on the council.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Move on to C. Me and Chapter 31, me and.
Get him tore up over here, he going to run off. You're fine, Troy, I got to pick on you. All right. Guess you want to hear from me right now, real quick. You know, I asked to move the meetings to 5 o'clock, roughly, to save us roughly $21,000 a year. I will go back and find another way to save money. The public has spoken, it's 65% that says, okay, we do not want to change council time, because they want to stay at 6 o'clock on that. So, you know, roughly, we can say on that, we've got 20% saying, yes, let's move it. We've got 10% or 12% says it doesn't matter to them. So, you know, they, it's one way or the other. You know, I've heard, I've seen all kind of comments on this. I got to get home in time to unwind and watch, get the kids fed and everything else, and I can watch it on TV, or I don't have time to get down there in time. That's the reason I said I would move the public comments to later into the meeting, down to item 13 or 14, till we got, so people could be here, so they got used to the time change and so on. But the public pretty well spoke of where they wanted to be. So as far as I'm concerned, we can just let this, leave it alone. We keep continuing to meet at 6 o'clock on that. And that's where I'm at, and I will continue to look and see how we can save money somewhere else on this. Okay? Thank you.
Appreciate that. Move on to number eight, other. Do any council member have any comments they would like to make? No comments. We'll move on down to number nine, closed session. The agenda item, and we need a motion to go into closed session in a second.
Second.
Pursuant, hold on, sorry about that. I know what I said.
Second.